Okay, we'll call it to order this October the 12th, 2016, meeting of the Franklin County Commission.
Roll call.
Commissioner Waymire.
President.
Commissioner Renaud.
President.
Chair Howard.
Present.
Commissioner Harris.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
If you'll all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for an invocation that will be led by Pastor Scott Dickinson of the Michigan Valley United Methodist Church.
I have the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray this morning. Lord, this morning, we thank you for our community. And, Lord, I especially this morning want to just take a minute and remember our commissioners. They're folks who have families, and they have friends, they have jobs, they have the things they like to do in our community. And, Lord, I always want to lift them and let them know that, as a community, we pray for them. And we pray for their wisdom and their guidance as they guide us and their staff. Lord, I want to pray this morning for our law enforcement, our sheriff, our police chief, Chief of Police, our fire department, EMS people. Lord, all those who serve us every day. And we want to lift them up to you and thank you for them. Again, we thank you for our community. We thank you for the things that are going forward in our community and the things that are happening, even some things that maybe we don't know about right up front, but things that we learn about and we're able to connect with. And, Lord, we pray for each of the churches in our community, people who are trying to help others, trying to just reach out and do what they can to help the homeless, help those who need food, who need just a little assistance, just be with them, be with other agencies, just to give us a great day today, watch over and protect us. And, Lord, help us to do everything in your name. We ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Okay, takes us to correspondence and organizational business.
Couple of things. One, we've got 30% calling in from the engineers for some of the stuff out of the industrial parts. Haven't had the opportunity to review those yet. Him and I are going to sit down hopefully this week and start doing that. And then Janet has an update on the temporary notes.
So I spoke with David Artterberry yesterday, who has been handling this process for us. And as you know, we passed a resolution last week to sell the $1 million in temporary notes. So David called me yesterday, and he let me know that he's really only had interest from one local bank, which is who we were going to solicit bids from, were from the local banks. We'd only had interest from one local bank. One bank had called him and said that they did not intend to bid, which had been a regular bidder in these issuances. And so David said that we could make some very minor changes to what we were, what our issuance was, and potentially get some, well, we would get more bids, and they would potentially be much more aggressive bids. We still wouldn't eliminate bidding to sending the bid sheet out to our local banks, but he felt like due to some other temporary notes that had been sold, that the market might be saturated right now in this area. So he said we could do one of two things. We could continue on with the issuance where it's at, at $1 million, and that means that those bonds would all have to be held by that one entity, and there would be a lot more reporting that they have to do. Or we could lower it by $5,000, which is the lowest increment we could back it down, and that would get it to $995,000. And the reporting becomes much less, and also, it doesn't have to be held continuously. We would still be reporting to the treasurer, the state treasurer, paying the state treasurer, so it wouldn't be like it would affect us in any other way. We would just be changing our issuance just a little bit so that we could get much more aggressive bids. He said the only possible negative thing that could happen from that, that we would maybe get somebody who wanted to bid at a discount, but the interest rate could be so much lower if they bid at a discount, that it would still be advantageous to us to go ahead and take the discount and the lesser interest, and we would still come out ahead. So he's looking for direction from us as to whether we want to continue to go with the million that we authorized last week. It doesn't change anything that we're doing. If we back it down to $995,000, the resolution you passed last week is still acceptable at that point, just we might get some more aggressive bids.
Sounds to me like that's what he's recommending, and that's what we're hiring for because of what he's...
He said if we stay with the million and we see what comes in from our local banks, having only had one bank that said they were interested in potentially bidding it, and they don't even know that they're going to bid it yet, that bank has to take it to their board of directors to see if they want to go ahead and bid it. But he said we could go ahead with the million, and we could see if we get any bids and see if they're acceptable bid, if it's an acceptable bid. He said, or we could go ahead and change it now, but he said we may have to change it if we go ahead with the million and nothing comes in on it.
My opinion is change it now.
Yeah, I think you go ahead and reduce it by the $5,000.
I would agree. We've got the $5,000, the reserve to cover $5,000. I mean, you know, that's not...
And David and I talked about that, that the $5,000 probably wasn't going to hurt us, you know? I mean, this, doing this was to preserve our bond rating, capital and reserve accounts, and so $5,000 really isn't going to make or break a bond rating probably. So David felt like this wasn't going to be a sacrifice to us. This wasn't going to make, make a big difference, so that $995,000 would be, would be a better way to go, probably to get some better bids.
So you'll, and we put the opportunity out to the local banks to start with.
We, we have already put it out to them, and we would definitely re-extend this offer to them once we make the amendments, because it could change what they could do, because it doesn't all have to be held by one bank now. When it was a million, it all had to be held by one bank. When it goes to $995,000, there could be 10 different banks that bid on this, and so we technically have 10 different financial institutions holding a portion of it. But like I said, it's all going to be serviced by the state treasurer, so it's not going to affect how we pay.
Are you going to need a motion and a vote to change that? Are we okay with just staying with what we voted on? You're okay staying?
Yeah. I just needed a consensus from you, where you guys wanted to go. I wanted to make sure that you guys knew before, you know, Derek and I discussed it, and we just felt it would be better to bring it before you guys, before we told David to do anything.
Appears we have a consensus on that.
Okay, I'll let David know today.
Okay. Anything else?
I have nothing.
You want to sign up for public comment?
Yep.
Okay, a citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
We don't have any.
I thought you said yes.
She said no.
You need to practice, Rick. That's good.
She said no.
In case you wanted to talk, that's what it is.
Good man. Okay.
Okay, we are going to have a consent agenda, right? Okay, items that need to be considered and approved today on the consent agenda are to approve the meeting minutes for October the 3rd, 2016. We have no tax change orders. And consider and approve a special payroll for the pay date of October the 11th, 2016, in the amount of $33,170.80. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion is our second?
Second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. First item is consideration of a request from the Ottawa High School Student Council to use the courthouse lawn for a homecoming block party scheduled for October the 12th, 2016, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Yeah, and there's not a whole lot to say about this. This is something we've done at least since I've been here.
We've been for this.
It's my understanding we have someone here willing to speak on that, if there are any questions. If there are any questions.
Do you know how many years in a row we've done this? I've lost count.
This will be the fourth year.
Fourth.
You just want to briefly tell us what your plans are to do down there, and then we'll...
We're going to have a party.
Have a party.
And we're all invited.
Yes, you are. This is the event that we like to host to bring the community into what the high school has going on. It's really our only big community involvement event that we do throughout the year. We like to host it at the courthouse so that everyone feels more welcome, that they're not trying to get to the high school and trying to, it's more, be in a public setting. And we will host, we will highlight all of our fall sports. Cheer, dance, band, and choir will perform. We'll have the new Ottawa High School team bus, and fire and EMS, and we'll highlight our homecoming candidates as well.
Is there a parade this year? No parade? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine.
Stop making floats well, and that just kind of went by the wayside, and we replaced it with this. It's fun.
Okay, any questions on this? Like I said, we've done it for every year since I've been here. If there's no questions, we'll look for a motion to approve their question from the Ottawa High School to have a homecoming block party on the courthouse lawn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Beth, do you guys need any extras, extension cords or anything? Alan? Okay, great.
Okay, item number two is approve the women, infants, and children contract dated October the 1st, 2016, September the 30th to September the 30th, 2017.
Good morning. This is the standard WIC contract. Nothing new about that, but I did ask Mary Ann Parkin, who's our WIC clerk and has been with WIC for 20 years or 27 years, to come share with you just briefly some of the changes that are going on with WIC. And it's a reminder that the WIC program is as much, if not more, an educational program as it is a food supplement program, so I wanted her to share some of the changes, so... Yeah, she's not happy with me, so...
We'll give you 45 minutes, Mary Ann. Will that be enough?
I'll make like four minutes. I did one. Try more than you need there.
Thank you.
And then just two. Sorry. Okay, well, so as Midge said, I've been doing the WIC program here in Franklin County for about 27 years now. For those of you that aren't familiar with WIC, it's a federally funded program for women, infants, and children. We provide nutritious food for the children and the women. The women on the program are pregnant. We go up to six months postpartum, or up to a year they can be on the program if they're totally breastfeeding. And then the infants and children, we go up to age five. To be on the program, you have to meet the income guidelines. The guidelines are 185% of the poverty guidelines. So an example of that would be a family of four could make up to $44,000 a year gross and possibly qualify for the program. Along with the income guidelines, they also have to have some type of nutritional or medical risk factor. So we do health assessments on everyone that comes in. They all fill out diet questionnaires, and we have a dietitian that goes over the diet questionnaire with them and does a lot of nutrition counseling with them. If they qualify, then they're issued checks that they use here, they can use them here in Ottawa, Walmart, and Price Shopper both, accept WIC checks. They're actually good anywhere in Kansas at a store that'll take them, and that's most of your major grocery stores like Dylan's and Kroger and so on. We do a lot of education. That's a big component of the program. One of the things that we've got new now is the wichhealth.org online, where they can go online and do little like classes on different topics, like picky eaters, or breastfeeding, or how to stay healthy during your pregnancy, that type of thing. What else? 53% of all infants in the United States are on WIC. Right now, our caseload is 583. We've got 129 women, 131 infants, and 323 children. So the booklet that I gave you, this is the booklet that the client gets after they get on the program. This has all the foods in it that they're allowed to get. They're not necessarily allowed to get everything that's in here. It's very limited and very specific on what they can receive. Most women and children receive milk, cereal, eggs, juice, beans, peanut butter. The infants receive formula and then baby food at six months, and infant cereal. So we have had a few changes. About 14 years ago, we went to electronic records. I got to go work at the state for supposed to be six months, ended up being two and a half years, on the design and development of the program that we're using right now. It's called KIC, so K, WIC for Kansas, WIC. That made things a lot easier. We actually print checks that the clients take to the store. The store gets paid much faster. It's deposited just like a regular check. The old system was a voucher system that they had to batch at the end of the month, send to the state, and then wait for reimbursement. So this way, they get their money a lot faster. Some of the new things they've added over the last few years has been a fruit and vegetable check for the children and the women. Children get an $8 check, and the women get an $11 check. And when I say $11, the total maximum value of that check is $11. If the client goes to the store and they get ready to check out, and they only have $10 worth of fruits and vegetables, then the check will only be worth $10, and that $1 is gone. They do not get any money back or any change back. The other checks say very specifically, two gallons of milk, 36 ounces of cereal, two cans of beans, one dozen eggs, or nine or 10 cans of formula. And the foods that are in your, in the booklets are the foods that they're allowed to choose from. Over the last couple of years, they've actually added whole grains now, so they have 32 ounces of whole grains, which would be like 100% whole wheat bread, whole wheat tortillas, brown rice, and whole wheat pasta they can choose from. The fruit and vegetable check is also new. And then the baby food for infants is new. And the mothers have an option of getting the baby food, fruits and vegetables, or they can get a fruit and vegetable check and make their own baby food if they want to. And then the last couple of years, they've added yogurt as an option. If you don't want all the milk that we provide, you can trade some of your milk for yogurt and cheese. So that's been a really nice option for the clients. We do a lot of work with breastfeeding. Erin and I are both certified breastfeeding educators. We're working with the hospital, and we're trying to get a breastfeeding coalition together so we can kind of get everybody on the same page. Even though we do provide formula, we really encourage breastfeeding. And we tell our moms, you know, if you have any problems at all, come see us, even if it's before your appointment, come in and see us so we can help you with that. I know Erin has been working on putting together some letters to send to some of the businesses here in town, so that they can learn about breastfeeding for their employees and also their customers, so they can be a breastfeeding friendly business. We've got stickers that they can put in their window if they want to do that. We're also involved with the High Five for Mom and Baby at the hospital now. This is a five-step program that they do, skin-to-skin contact with the baby as soon as it's born, no nipples or bottles or pacifiers, rooming in, breastfeeding support. Oh, gosh, now I can't remember the fifth one. So anyway, we talk about that a lot and let our clients know that when they go have their babies in the hospitals, they're not going to be sent home with formula. They're going to be really encouraged to breastfeed. Another new thing that we've had recently is the automated appointment reminder text that our clients get now through our system. It'll send them out a reminder for their appointment the day before, and this has helped our show record get better. We don't have so many no-shows. And then the most exciting thing, and the last thing, is that next year, towards the end of the year, WIC is going to go to a card instead of checks. I am really, really excited about this. Right now, when you use your check, you have to get everything on that check, and you might not need eggs today, but you have to get it, or you'll lose it if you don't get it when you cash the check. So with the card, you'll be able to just go into the store, and if you just need a gallon of milk, you get a gallon of milk.
So the money will roll over, unlike with the check? If there's money left over, it'll just roll over on the card?
Well, it's not so much money, it's items. So if their check had four gallons of milk for the month...
I got you.
It'll keep track of that four gallons, and at the end of the 30 days, if you haven't used the four gallons, that's gone, and then we go to the next month.
I got you.
Their benefit, the food package stays the same every month. It's always the same items. So the other thing with that will be if they lose their checks, we could just, or if they lose the card, then we can just cancel the card and issue a new card. We don't have a lot of problem with that, but right now, if they lose their checks, they have to wait for five days before we can replace them. And so if you've got a baby that needs some formula, you know, they have to wait for five days, so...
Can you touch a little bit on how this kind of intervention and access to proper nutrition is so important to early childhood development? Overall, why, why are we doing this?
Well, to make sure that our kids are eating healthy. We've got so many children right now that are overweight. Part of being on WIC is having a nutritional or a medical risk factor. So if they're overweight, underweight, diabetic, pregnant women, you know, kids just don't eat very well, and we try to really educate the parents and so they can hopefully feed their children better.
I was going to add, you know, brain development is critical at those ages, and if children don't have the appropriate nutritional value, brain development potential for education and learning decreases, so it's just critical that our kids have that.
Well, and the breastfeeding goes along with that, too. There's been so many benefits shown now for breastfeeding your baby, for the baby and for the mom. So we really, really, even though we give out formula, we really, really encourage our moms to, to try the breastfeeding, and we try, and we offer them support.
Can you guys help with businesses that want to set up like a mother's room when things?
We would.
Yeah, and, and the thing that I see, of course, they're propping up more and more in, in government buildings, definitely, at state and federal, and there's supposed to actually be availability at private businesses, and I forget the cutoff for the number of employees, but if an employer wanted to contact you and helping to set up a mother's, mother's room, you guys could do that?
Oh, yeah, we could help them, sure. We actually had, one of our offices, we were using at the Health Department for anybody in the building that works here that might want to use it, or if somebody visiting the building might want to use it to pump or to breastfeed their baby. The healthcare partnership is using it right now, so once they're out, I hope we can set that back up again, so...
And I see this contract is a federal contract, and they will reimburse us $82,172, correct?
Up to that.
Up to that, depending on how much... I submit affidavits every month, and then they reimburse us.
So it would not make a lot of sense not to use this program if that money's out there?
Right. Yeah.
Okay, any more questions for Major Mary Ann? It was not hard, was it, Mary Ann?
You did a great job.
Thank you.
With that, I would look for a motion to approve the contract dated October the 1st, 2016, through September the 30th, 2017, for the women, infants, and children.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
I don't know if it's true or not, but I know kids that have breastfed have less ear problems, too.
Yes, yes.
Allergies, better immune.
Well, yeah, but, yeah.
We'll be promoting the breastfeeding policy among businesses as well as the county, you know, to support breastfeeding.
Breastfed babies don't, don't usually get as, get sick as often as babies that are formula fed, so for businesses, it's a good idea to support it because you're keeping your employer there, because they're not home with, or their employee there, they're not home with their sick child.
Absolutely.
So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, discuss and approve the August 2016 EMS activity report. Nick?
Good morning, Commissioner.
How are you, Nicholas?
Cold out there this morning. This morning, talking about the August, not September. August 2016, we had a total of 307 calls for the month, bringing us to a total of 2,307 calls for the year, average of 9.9 calls a day, 232 calls over where we were last year. We had very good revenues at $97,492,000, which is $30,000 over what we're supposed to make each month to meet where we're supposed, where we're at, for a total of $714,423.28 in total revenues for the year, leaving us only $85,576 to meet budget. To my knowledge, $97,000 is the largest revenue we've ever had, so...
Yeah.
But as we know, call volume's up, all that, so it doesn't make a difference. With large deposits, we have big adjustments. $62,199.35 in adjustments. You can tell the two highest are Medicare and Medicaid. We sent $28,873.95 into the State Set Off Collections Program, $7,683.38 in the Midwest Collections, and sent out $155,405.20 in service fees with 14 move-ups, so... Jumping back to page five, we have been, as you guys know, since the new ER doctors came in, really pushing to get patients into ransom, so we're not spreading our trucks out like we're used to up in the city of bad. We brought 140 of 202 patients transferred to ransom. We took 42 patients to LATHA. The one thing that I haven't been able to successfully track that I'm trying to get a little bit better with is the number of patients that we're taking out of the hospital. I do have a, the number of transfers, we do, but how many of those patients come out after we take them in? That's one of the things that I've been working with the hospital, we're trying to figure out exactly our numbers of what's leaving, what's we bring them in. By the year-end report, I should have that, so I can tell you guys over the year what that looked like. We had 68 total refusals in August, bringing us to a 22.15% refusal rate, which is still under the national average of 24%. Any questions on the August adjustment report that I can answer? I have one in September to go into detail with some things for you guys that you asked for.
You're well ahead of where you were last year on deposits, aren't you?
What's that?
You're well ahead of where you were last year on deposits, too.
Yes.
Last year was a good year as well.
Yeah, last year, I think we deposited $945,000. Don't quote me 100% on that, but I believe that's where we're at. And this year, while, unless something changes, we'll be over $1 million in deposits this year, so... And we have, since you did bring that up, I'll, I'll touch a little bit. We did have our billing meeting, our PAM went to Blue Cost Meeting, which they look at our rates, look at our adjustments, that kind of stuff, and I think I mentioned this a little bit earlier to you guys. Towards the end of the year, we're going to have to take a look and see where we're at compared, because right now, when you base your rates, you base them on the insurance payments, your adjustment reports and that. With our Blue Cost adjustments, we're actually leaving money on the table.
Yep.
So we haven't adjusted them last year, so about every two years, we really take a good look at them, so I'll be bringing those numbers to you guys towards the end of the year to see if we want to make some changes.
Any more questions for Nick on the August EMS activity report? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the August 2016 EMS activity report.
So moved.
Have a motion is our second?
Second.
Motion is second. Janet?
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, with that, Nick's going to talk to us about the September 2016 EMS activity report.
Again, we had another month of over 300 calls, 304 calls in the month of September, bringing us to 252 calls over where we were last year, to a total of 2,611 calls for the year. And we broke over 10 calls a day. Had deposits of $78,741.86, which is $12,751.19 over where we need to be, leaving us a total of $6,834 to meet the $800,000 that we budget for our, part of our, part of our budget. Did have write-offs of $49,703.67. Sent $10,515.58 to set off. Four thousand, three hundred and forty-eighty to the collections, uh, Midwest collections. We invoiced out for service fees a hundred and fifty-five thousand, one eighty-five, and we had twenty-eight move-ups. Remember in September, we have tractor show, we have car show, we have all that stuff, so we try to dedicate stuff to that, so we will have more move-ups, bringing Wellsville down to keep a truck available for that. So, any questions on that page? We'll jump to page five again. We did transport a hundred and twenty-nine of the hundred and ninety-four patients to ransom. Again, forty-two patients went to Latha. We, uh, had sixty-two refusals, which is a twenty percent refusal rate, which with all the stuff we had going on, it's car shows, that kind of stuff, I like to see that we still kept our refusal rates down. On the back page, you guys have been asking me for some information on our collections, on that kind of stuff. So the first thing is the call volume. You can see the trend line. I took over in two thousand and six and we ran two thousand, five hundred and twelve calls that year. With the projections right now, we're gonna be over thirty-five hundred calls this year. So in the last ten years, we've went up a thousand calls, so. We're seeing a pretty good increase on that. It doesn't look like it's gonna slow down at all. To the right, you see the, the state collections program. I know some of you guys have asked kind of what we had with that. It breaks down each year of what we've sent to collect to the state set off program. So like in two thousand and sixteen, so far, we sent a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-one, thirty-eight to collections. We received back twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine, eighty-one for an eighteen percent collection rate. If you look at the totals since two thousand and seven, we sent one million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four, fifteen into that, and received two hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-four, forty-three out of that for eighteen percent. So it's pretty consistent, about eighteen percent collection rate.
That surprises me. I'd think it would grow since you have all that residual money sitting there on their books.
I agree with you, and like I said, the state, the state collections program is basically how that works. So just to refresh, is we send it in there, they don't actively try to collect the money. They don't send out and ask again, they don't make phone calls, anything like that. The only time we collect on that is if somebody has a return, a tax return, or they get some kind of inheritance, that kind of stuff, that has to go through the state, then we get paid before they get their money. And that's how that program works. We, uh, then in two thousand and fifteen, signed with Midwest Collections to, uh, collect our people that are out of state, people that don't have social security numbers, good addresses, the hard to collect data that we, uh, we can't get. So we've spent, we sent, ugh, fifty thousand, five hundred and forty dollars into them last year, and got seven hundred and twenty-two back for a collection rate of one point four-three. And I, I know that looks horrible, but this, this debt's hard to collect. For us to get any of it, it's pretty much amazing as it is, but two thousand and sixteen, we're the same way, so. That's where we're at with collection rates. If, uh, you look down to the bottom, which says two thousand and sixteen with a bunch of numbers on it, that's our call volume per hour. So you can look at that and what we've been trying to figure out, is with our call volume increase and we try to do education, one o'clock onto the five o'clock when we schedule our cruise education and all of that. If you look at our highest peak call volume, it's at one o'clock, so. Being able to do the training at normal times has been kind of tough, so we're readjusting our training schedule to keep more people in class. But our call time starts out pretty much eight o'clock in the morning and will run until about eight o'clock at night. We're pretty consistent across the board, so. Just some numbers that I thought you guys might be interested in seeing, and I can answer any questions you have on those.
On your, um, request where to transport to, is that based quite a bit on geography? I mean, Anderson County, is that because you're current at the South End or Lawrence and Lath Med?
Yeah, we, uh, we've always kind of had the policy, we'll take them where they want to go. We've had to stricken that up quite a bit, and you can tell with our call volume, we're still running with three trucks like we were a thousand calls, a thousand calls ago. So we allow them. So if you're in Richmond, you want to go to, uh, Anderson County, we take care of that. The policy states now that we'll pretty much do that as long as we have a truck in the county, so. If two of our trucks, let's say we have a transfer at KU, and we have a patient that went to Latha from Wellsville, and we get another call and they want to go to Latha. Our policy states they come back to ransom and then transport can be arranged afterwards, because we have to keep a truck in the county to cover status, so. That's where we're at. We have been lucky most of the time with staffing the flex person that we have, that we can staff four trucks throughout the day, so we have a little flexibility with that. I meet today with ransom to talk to them about their transfers, because a lot of times you see that high call volume at one o'clock. That's when the doctor comes, sees the patients, and they get transferred out, is that about around the noon hour. So we're gonna talk about what we can do to make sure we're not getting four or five piled on us like we've seen here lately. So, Nick, aren't there, I, I'm thinking I've seen this before, act like I'd call them actuary tables, that correlate, uh, population, call volume to, uh, to equipment utilization and FTEs, so that it helps you make a determination, are you properly situated or, or equipped with amount of equipment you need and the number of FTEs you need based upon your population and call area and the amount of calls that you, you're receiving over a period of time? I think at this time, we're good. Getting that fifth truck has helped a lot, the transfer truck, because what we had before, we didn't have enough trucks if we did hit the call that we needed. Where we have injuries, like long-term people out, it does take a hit in our overtime budget, because we do have to, uh, staff those three trucks. With some changes that's happened now at ransom, as you guys know, they're starting their ER, their helicopter pads closed down. With that happening, uh, helicopters that they use, which is basically just Children's Mercy right now, they use those for their neonate transfers, they have to land at the airport. We're gonna have to transport them in, wait for them, take them back. So that's gonna, if we're running with minimum staffing of six.
It's less than one a month, and with, uh, Overland Park having a full pediatrics, they have a unit that'll come down staffed with, uh, doctors, nurses, so.
And I know that's where they're talking, is trying to get there with them and not be flying as many of them, but that's where we're at now with six, if we only have minimum, if we have minimum staffing of six, and we get one of those, it's gonna really hurt us. But I've told them, I said, give me a call, I'll come in and take care of that if I can. So we're looking, we're having to evaluate our minimal staffing and that kind of stuff with the call volume coming up. Right now, I'm not seeing a lot of concerns, but we'll see how the, the year ends and where we're at.
I had one question on transports. I noticed on August and September, it shows forty-two transported to Latha Medical Center. Is that just coincidence?
That's a coincidence. I, I, I looked at that too, because I was like, okay, did I mess my numbers up? But it's a coincidence, both of them were forty-two patients going up there.
Is that a normal number? Is that a high number for?
We average anywhere between thirty and fifty. When I get the month and the year in numbers for you, you can see the fluctuation of that. There for a while, we were taking upwards of sixty there a few years ago. Seen a decrease in that over time, so. And I think a lot of that is because we do, uh, transport more patients here, and you can see that by the number. Used to, we were transporting ninety to a hundred patients here, and we're seeing a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty patients coming here now. So we're seeing more patients coming back here.
Now, I don't know a way, I mean, obviously you don't want to sit there and do a survey with your patient while you're running them to the hospital, but I can see some people being taken to Latha Med because geographically, from the northeast corner, it's, hey, it's just about as quick. But I can also wonder if it's because I work in Latha, my doctors are in Latha, and though I have a, something happens here, I want to go there because of my doctors are there. And that's why I was asking the question, whether it's because I have a relationship with the doctor there or is it because of the geographic location?
A lot of people do ask that. They go, my doctor's at Latha, I want to go there. The thing about that is, we, we do explain, is you don't see your doctor in the ER.
Right.
Any, any ER can contact your doctor, and if you need to be admitted, you can be transported up there. But, uh, that's one of the big things that a lot of people will say, is my doctors are, my doctors at Research Medical Center. Well, it's not feasible for us to take a truck on somebody who has a snuffle, you know, maybe having a little bit of pneumonia or something, all the way to research to the ER where they're not going to see their doctor. So we just kind of have to discuss that with them a little bit and figure out the best, uh, the best option for them at the time. But that is some of the stuff that does play into it pretty heavy, and I think just education of the patients has helped us out with that.
Well, thanks for the reports. They're always very good and very thorough, so. Any, not, any more questions for, uh, Nick on the September report? Would look for a motion to approve the September twenty sixteen EMS activity report.
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
I'll pick the, yeah.
I'll do it for you, for me, please.
Thanks, Nick. Item number five, consider reappointing two members and advertising for one new member to the Franklin County Planning Commission.
Larry. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In September this, uh, year, we had, uh, three members that have served out their terms. Their terms are for three years. According to our bylaws, uh, they are eligible to be reappointed, so that they can serve a maximum of, of two terms. We did give, uh, letters to all of those, and their, the three that were affected were Lauren Stewart, Stephanie Valencia, and Robert Bowers. Two of those, uh, have submitted letters back indicating they would accept a, a reappointment. However, Mr. Stewart said that they, he would prefer not to be considered again. At the, uh, last meeting, we had, uh, discussions regarding the fact that we've had a lot of problems with getting people to volunteer for that. And so if you, any of you have any one in mind that might be, uh, interested, we certainly appreciate that. But I would like for you to take an action this morning to reappoint, uh, Stephanie Valencia and Robert Bowers, and then direct staff to, uh, advertise for the one vacancy that we would have.
And there's no requirement about where you live or anything like that on this?
No, I think that we have in the past, uh, looked at maps so that you get better representation throughout, but, uh, in this case, we have one representative that's from the, the city of Ottawa, and the others are located throughout the, the county and the rural areas.
So that's something we, in the past, made some progress on. We'd had a map and you'd mapped out where about all the members live, and I think we'd made some progress on even to that, that outfield and some, uh, maybe underrepresented areas.
In terms of districts as well as, uh, geographically.
Yep.
I'll make the motion then that we reappoint Stephanie Valencia and Robert Bowers and advertise for a position for one more member of the planning commission. Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all.
Janet.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
I'll get to it for you in a couple minutes. I got a bunch of this, though, here, man. Okay, item number six, consider awarding the bid for culvert to Welborn Sales Incorporated in the amount of nineteen thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty cents.
Good morning, Commissioners. The department accepted fax bids. We received three. The two lowest bidders did not bid twelve gauge fifteen inch pipe. Uh, one of the little bidder, the actual little bidder, did not bid twelve gauge eighteen inch pipe, which means that Welborn Sales bid was the little bid which most closely complied with what was requested and should be awarded the bid. The request is a motion awarding the culvert bid to Welborn Sales.
Any questions on this? Anyone have a question on it?
Take a motion to award the, uh, bid to Welborn Sales?
Second.
A motion and a second to award the culvert bid to Welborn Sales in the amount of nineteen thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty cents. Janet?
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Jim.
Item number seven, consider renewing the employment agreement between the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners and Derek Brown.
As you guys know, this is my contract, the services as the county counselor. This is the same contract that we had last year. The only changes that were made were the duration. This contract is for a three-year period, beginning October one through the end of September nineteen, and then the salary was adjusted as well. Other than that, it is the same agreement that we executed last year, so. Certainly, if you have any other questions for me on that.
I think we've all had the opportunity to look at this and know what's, what's this contract holds, so. Is there any questions on this? If not, would look for a motion to.
We do have one public comment on this.
There we go. Who's that? Gene.
Yes, sir.
Remember what I read earlier? I knew I was reading that for a reason. Go ahead and come.
Gene Hurt, one oh seven Jefferson Street in Pomona. Okay, I just heard Derek say what, everything in this contract is, is, uh, the same before the administrator resign, except for the salary. Is that right?
No, you're. The, uh, counselor, all he did was extend the term, same rate. He gets paid a little extra for being administrator.
Which we will talk about in the next.
Yeah.
Wait a minute. I'm talking about the counselor. I mean, he's getting the eighty thousand that he had when, when Mr. Holmes resigned, right? Okay, so the salary, but the way he just indicated that, you know, the, the salary had been changed. But you're telling me that it's still the same as it was?
The counselor.
Okay, thank you.
Actually.
Well, and I can clarify that.
Yeah, it, it, there is a small raise that was with this.
Rounded it.
It's not the exact same. We rounded it up a little bit. If you want to go ahead and clarify it, Derek.
Well, I just, the contract calls for annual performance increases based upon a similar schedule of other county employees. So the raise that you see in there, um, was based largely on that schedule. It has nothing to do with the interim administrator. It's entirely separate.
Thank you, Derek.
I clear it up?
Okay, okay. Okay, where are we back at? The base, the base rate's the same. You got your annual, like every other employee. Yep. Right.
Okay, with that, would consider a motion to approve the renewing the employment agreement between the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners and Derek Brown as the county counselor.
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire? Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, item number eight is some, one signed up to speak on eight. Okay. Item number eight is consider approving agreement between the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners and Derek Brown for services as the interim county administrator. Okay, you want to speak now, Gene, or you want to?
What you have in front of you here is basically a letter that sets out the terms of my appointment as interim county. as interim county administrator. It largely references back to my employment agreement for everything other than the additional salary, as well as the four-month duration of this. So as you can see, it runs from October one, 2016, through the end of January, 2017. In the event that you wish to extend my services in this capacity beyond that, we would sit down and give you the discussion. And the reason why it was put in this format was just so that we didn't have two contracts and a bunch of cross-references. This was just a easy one.
Okay. Go ahead and come up, Gene. Still, everything with public comments still holds. Five minutes, same as before.
Okay. Now, on this one, the newspaper came out shortly after the last meeting on Thursday about what Mr. Holmes was getting for a salary, ninety-three thousand dollars plus, and you gave him a thirty thousand dollar severance pay. Okay, as I stated also last week and Wednesday, you know, he should have given a thirty-day notice now, but in the contract, it states that unless it's agreed to, that he doesn't have to do that with the agreement of a few of the commissioners. Was that done?
Was what's done? Was what's done, the thirty days?
Yes.
We're not going to-
That's a personnel matter.
That's fine. I just want a statement. Okay, now, since that's ninety-three thousand dollars, you know, now, I understand from what's on the internet that, and I imagine now Derek has approved of this, but five thousand dollars each pay period for the four months, that's twenty thousand dollars for Derek to get. You know, that's, to me, is not right, because if you wouldn't have had Derek to step in and take this position, you would have to put somebody in there wanting a lot more money than that, and you know that. Now, Derek is an outstanding individual here, and I believe he can handle both jobs with no problem, and I still believe that. And when you got somebody that good and what he's doing right now as a counselor and that, you should be able to give him more than that. And because, you know, twenty thousand up until the end of January, so I guess you're not going to change your mind, and I imagine if Derek's in agreement with this for himself, fine, but you're talking about a caliber of an individual here putting, setting in on this position with all those conditions going on that's going, like for the industrial park, and all the other things that he has to do with this. And he was flat, you know, he left the position flat, and so in my way, you know, you average out pay period for what Holmes got per month was around seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month approximately. Okay? Now, you're only giving him five thousand. I still believe that you should be giving him at least six of those months. Now, if you're not going to do that, so be it, but I would like to approve that if he fulfills the job for the four months that he's going to serve as the interim administrator, then, and he performs well, then you should give him the extra thousand dollars at least for what he didn't get. Because, you know, you see, when you combine Derek's salary and Mr. Holmes' salary, you're looking at over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Lisa Johnson, what'd she get? What, a hundred and ten thousand or whatever? Okay? So you've got to keep your good employees, and Derek is. And I believe, again, as I stated last week, I believe he'll handle the job well, and you should at least look at that part of it. And thank you, Derek, for what you're doing.
Okay. Any more comments on this? If not, would look for a motion to approve the agreement between the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners and Derek Brown for services as interim county administrator.
So move.
Motion and a second? You're the second, second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Or the third.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, Texas staff reports. Derek?
Whether this was organizational business or staff report, I'm not sure, but the mold in the courthouse, we have identified the problematic areas, and I'll convince she has been in an area in our office that's gotten me a report on what needs to go out in this RFP, and my hope is to have that prepared for her, but she's been down at that courthouse a lot, talking to employees, and has gained such great understanding, so that's what-
Very good. More? Sheriff.
One question. I just had a couple of things. I'd kind of echo a little bit of what Gene said there. I believe Derek is going to do well for the county in this interim role. We've already been working together on several projects that were, that are kind of out there still unfinished, and so I appreciate that. Last year at budget time, I talked about changing some things with our training program. I want to give you a little bit of an update on that. One of our deputies that we've hired is a paramedic, and he has been working with EMS, and he's working under their medical protocol and has been reestablished to do training. So he's been doing, we've been doing our CPR and AED training, and we've started doing that in-house, and so that's keeping us a whole lot, it's a whole lot more convenient for us. We're able to get everybody trained a lot quicker that way, and it takes some of the load off of EMS as well. And so we've been working, we worked with Nick for a while and his staff to get that accomplished, and we've been able to move forward on that. And he gave his second class on it yesterday for everyone, and then we've got another class tomorrow for our entire staff, and so I just wanted to update you guys to how that, that part is working out. The last two things I have are, maybe wouldn't be traditionally sheriff's office things, but we have, we have a homeless problem in our county, and that affects our jail. We have people that will come in that are not, that don't have a true home, and when they leave, they have no place to go to. And so several months back, I got together a group of people. We've kind of created like a homeless coalition. We meet at the sheriff's office every month. We have people from the Ottawa Minister Alliance, Hope House, ECAN, Salvation Army, United Way, several other organizations, and we meet once a month on that. We recently got approved by an organization where we can bring, they will come down here and they will work so that we can get a house set up that would be for single men, particularly we would have people that we could, that once they transition out of the jail, they'd have a place to go, and it would have programming and things like that. And I just wanted to update you guys as to where we are. There's a community partnership that we have going on. The problem that we've, what we've run into is someone goes to jail in August, they come in in shorts and flip-flops, they get out in November, December, and they have only the clothes that were on their back. So we've been working pretty well with Hope House and places like that to, to get them clothing and, and trying to do some placement, but this is going to be something that will more formalize it, and so I just wanted to update you guys as to where we are on that. Last thing I have is that we recently got approved by the IRS to, as a 501(c)(3) to have a Franklin County Sheriff's Office Foundation, which is close to what the police department has, a police foundation. We now have a sheriff's office foundation. It's a citizen board, there are representatives on that board from every part of the county. We have people that work in banking industry, some construction, school superintendents. There's a wide variety of people. We have seven members on the board, and we'll be having that first board meeting at the beginning of November. And the purpose of that is people have made donations periodically to the sheriff's office, and they want that for a specific purpose, and that goes into the trust, and then I'm able to write them a letter through IRS code that allows that to be a charitable donation. What this does is kind of solidify that, and then it has a board that would be an overwatch of that to ensure, I can assure you that every time someone's given a donation, since I've been there, we have spent that money on what they wanted it to be spent on, but this will have a board that will be in place, and so if someone wants to have any type of donation where the interest will continue to fund a particular program, this would be a board that would ensure that those type of things happen. So we're just trying to make more transparency and have things for, for the future on planning with this, and so we're hoping that this program will be able to help and support the Sam Smith Scholarship Fund, as well as our K-9 program, and then if they have any other programs that this board would like to do. And so that's kind of where we are, and I just wanted you guys to, to know where we are and the purpose of that. If, any of you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Where are we at on jail numbers? We haven't talked about that for a while. Are you full? Are you down?
We are, they're, they're down a little bit right now, but we do still have some farmed out. We have seven farmed out down in Lyon County. Part of that is we, well, we are just under sixty, and we don't have that jail expansion part is not quite completed yet. Derek and I have met about that and talked about that a little bit.
And we're paying what a day for farmed out?
I believe down there it's forty dollars a day, maybe forty-five a day, that we are still, but we do have those farmed out. Part of that is because of the numbers, and part of that is because the way that we are situated right now, if, depending on if we have who is in jail, there are certain people we cannot have together, and if we have an incident that happens, for instance, if there's a fight in the jail, if it's in a big day room, everybody gets listed on there through the court as a witness, if they're not a suspect, well, and they can't have contact with each other, and sometimes we have to keep those people separated, and the best, with our current situation, the easiest way to do that is to farm people out. So that, that does have something to do with a couple of them that we have farmed out in Lyon County right now.
So we're paying close to three hundred dollars a day?
Yes. Yes. And that's why it's imperative. We're hoping to get this project finished up, and the jail administrator has been on the, on a company that, on a couple items that we've been waiting on to get that done, and then we've had interim administrators been brought up to speed as to where we are on those, on all those things as well, so.
Okay, just curious.
Thank you.
Jim?
Just want to let you guys know and announce publicly that the last day to register to vote is next Tuesday, and then we will begin early voting next Wednesday, so it's going to be a lot going on between now and then. We have the ballots all at Ramsey's being printed right now. Hopefully, we'll be getting those back by the, by the end of the week, if not by Monday of next week, so we can be ready to early vote. Additionally, the advanced ballots all start going out next Wednesday also, so we've already been receiving substantial numbers of advanced ballot forms, so we'll be, start preparing those on Monday to go out on Wednesday, so lots happening in the clerk's office right now with the presidential election. We are going to have some extended hours too, and I'll get those to you guys.
Okay. Okay, takes us to Commissioner comments and board reports. Cole?
Hospital meeting next week, but nothing to add right now.
Last Friday, I joined lunch group and the bike ride that Midge mentioned, first Friday of each month, and that was an interesting, probably they rode down to Forest Park and back, and I think next month they plan to ride south a ways. Monday night, I went to the Lane City Council meeting. Under Sheriff Rick Geis was there, and they talked about some of the ordinance they have on four-wheelers and the road, driving and stuff, and then I forwarded Jim a mention on a road condition down in that neck of the woods. Then yesterday, I attended Wellsville Chamber of Commerce meeting. They finished their bylaws and approved those, new bylaws and membership rules and regulations, and talked about their Wellsville Days they just had and some upcoming events. They have a wine and brew thing coming up in October and some other events, their Christmas thing, so pretty much it.
Steve?
Just haven't been to any meetings since last meeting. Have an ECAN meeting next week on Tuesday evening, should be.
That's it. Roy?
Went to Chamber of Commerce meeting yesterday morning. They'd, John, John was out of the office, so he went, or out of town. He wasn't able to give his report. Anyway, some things they've been working on, the Leadership Trustees, Janelle Myers is going to be the chairman of that now and going forward with that, that project. They gave a report on Ladies Night Out, and they handed out over five hundred bags, gift bags, and they had twenty-six zip codes. They asked everybody to put down their zip code, and they had twenty-six different zip codes for that event, and they thought it was very successful. Sean Turner gave a report on Day on the Farm, had about four hundred and fifty third graders coming from all over Franklin County, all the third graders out to Sylvester Ranch for Day on the Farm, and they served about six hundred people totally for their luncheon, and a great event for kids of Franklin County to introduce them to not only agriculture, but they had dairy and, and farm animals, and they had wildlife, and just had a lot of various other activities there for the third graders to get exposure about rural activities and what's going on in the rural community. Tomorrow night is, of course, their meet, meet the candidates right here in the annex at six-thirty, at eight o'clock, for all the candidates running for office. Meet and greet them and talk to them about any issues you might have. Just touch base on the Development Councils. October 25th is their annual meeting, and one thing James talked about was he's working with different organizations, how to, how to get workforce ready, people ready to fill jobs when they do come up. You know, that's, that's a big issue with any company that, you know, comes to town is do we have a workforce ready to, to fill the jobs that are needed and, you know, have certain skills available that are necessary for any new businesses and industry to come to town. He's working with groups that try to get something started for that kind of vocational type training. Brandon Welcox is working on recruiting new members for the chamber, and he's tasked with getting three new members a month, and touching base with all the old members and for sixty new members, that's one of his jobs. They did talk a little bit about, you know, taking on the convention of tourism activities for Franklin County, and I wonder if they have enough staff to manage, manage that transition, so they just touch base, maybe they might need to look at a half-time person or part-time person to help with that. I don't know where they're going there, but I think their director's really busy now and he'll be even more busy when that comes on board in January. That's about all I have. I don't know if Derek has anything else. Derek was at the meeting?
Okay, I attended Richmond City Council meeting last night, a pretty short meeting. They talked about considering bids on the Morgan waterline replacement, and they also talked about bids for an additional waterline project down there. One of the main topics they was discussing was getting someone hired and trained to be able to do the city clerk's duties if she was to be sick or go on vacation. They have nobody right now. They're under a new system on computers, and no one else understands it, and they was trying to figure out what they're going to do about getting somebody that could come in and, and do her job if she was to be gone for a while, and that was the main topic there. That's all I have at this time. Okay, the next-
Okay, the next item will be to enter into executive session for discussion of a personnel matter for thirty minutes. It'll be with the county counselor and the commission. Anyone else, Derek?
We'll take five? Yeah, we'll take five. We'll go into the executive session at a quarter till ten, be out at a quarter after eleven. So moved?
I'll make a second.
I thought Randy was leaving me.
Jerry didn't leave.
Motion to go into executive session.
We got a motion in a second?
Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm going to lose any of my five minutes.
Oh, my gosh.
We're back out of executive session, ten fifteen. Almost ten sixteen. No action taken? With that, we'd look for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Having motions or a second?
Yep.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.